...of the Cape Elizabeth Town Council. Could I please have the roll call from the clerk?
Chairman Garvin.
Here.
Counselor Deveraux.
Here.
Counselor Gabrielson.
Here.
Counselor Caitlin Jordan.
Here.
Counselor Penelope Jordan. Counselor Randall.
Here.
And Counselor Straw.
Here. Thank you. Would you all please join me in rising and pledging allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Start with any reports or correspondence from any councilors. Does anybody have anything they want to report? Counselor Deveraux?
I wanted to report that Counselor Garvin and I both attended TEDx at Cape Elizabeth High School. It was a wonderful event. I don't know how many people got to attend it, but it's a biannual event. It was fabulous, very well done, and kudos to the school for going to all that work and putting together the event.
Any other reports or correspondence? I'll report another activity Counselor Deveraux and I have been involved in was the ad hoc committee that was put together by the school board, inclusive of community members, parents and non-parents, building administrators, the town manager, facilities director, and other staff, that was organized to review and make a recommendation to the school board about whether or not an item should be brought forward in the 20/21 school budget for further review and needs assessment for the three school facilities. That committee has wrapped up its work as of last week, and the recommendation unanimously of the committee was that the school board consider including that in their upcoming budget. So, all of the materials for that, including some good videos, discussion, and some field photography work that one of the committee members did, that looked at some neighboring towns, some recent renovation or builds that have been done there, all of that material is online. You can find it on the school board's website, and I think linked on the town website as well. So, any other reports or correspondence? Seeing none, Counselor Straw, the finance committee report, please.
Thank you. So, in your packets you will find the appropriation control, the expense distribution, the revenue control, and the revenue distribution covering the various revenue and expense outlays over the last month. You'll also see the key, some of the key fields have been highlighted in the dashboard that's been provided as well. We'll be talking about the legal services line item later in the meeting. One of the others that I would flag would be the fact that our overtime numbers are running below budget for the time being. Don't count on that remaining as the winter continues on here. And besides that, I think we've now all received a copy of the latest audit report, which we'll be going over at some point in the near future. With that, I turn it back to the chair.
Any questions for Counselor Straw? On that last item Matt and I were just discussing prior to the meeting, we will be setting up joint workshop with the school board to review the findings of the audit as we do every year. So, that'll be something we'll be discussing dates for if tonight, then in the near future. Any other questions for Counselor Straw regarding the finance committee report? Great, seeing none. Have opportunity for citizens here to comment on anything not on tonight's agenda. Is there anybody that wishes to speak to a topic or item that's not on tonight's agenda? Please come forward to the podium if you do. Seeing none, we'll move along. Matt, your monthly managers' report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we're all painfully aware of now, winter is currently underway, and our public works crews have been facing some challenging situations with the past two storms, primarily because they've been directly during commuting times and have made a bit of a challenge for everybody to get to work, as well as to the time of day that they've been starting, and they've been in fairly icy conditions. The crew is working hard at maintaining our roadways, and they're also anticipating a delivery of our new plow truck that was in last year's budget towards the beginning of February. So, hopefully that'll be coming just in time. We've been requested to host a joint meeting between Cape Elizabeth, South Portland, and Portland for PAX, or Portland Area Comprehensive Traffic System, and GP Cog to discuss top priority regional transportation projects that PAX should advance for planning and funding, as well as GP Cog's policy advocacy priorities. So, you'll be receiving a poll from me over the next day or two to try to find a date that I can get a couple, three members from the council who could, it's not really a command performance, but if I could get a couple, three priority volunteers, that would be great, greatly appreciated, as well as meeting with the other two different towns electeds. Work commenced this morning on cutting of invasive plants at Fort Williams. This is a project that is in collaboration with the Friends of Fort Williams and is anticipated to be all week. We have staff in the park that will be directing people to keep a safe distance from where the work is being performed, as this machine is a fairly robust device that is, it needs a 300-foot radius from the machinery to be safe. That's basically a football field in all directions, just because it is going to be thrashing some of the invasive species about, and you do not want to be hit by any debris, which will be cleaned up, but it is by management of the invasive species at the fort. I received a good amount of interest in the finance director position, and am reviewing the applications and moving the hiring process forward. And the town received one participant in the pay and display request for proposals. Three entities had shown interest in that project, but one provided a response, which is a fairly comprehensive and a good response that I'm currently reviewing as well, and will be having a recommendation for that going forward. We'll be having a couple more meetings with the vendor to see and clarify any questions. Jim and I will be both working on that together. So, now looking forward to move that forward. And the ordinance committee shall, it's anticipated they'll have their work wrapped up in order for next month's council meeting, and that way we can come back with a combined package for the council to consider regarding pay and display at the fort. And finally, the town office will be closed Monday, January 21st, and this is as we observed Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Matt? Seeing none. Next item is the review of the draft minutes of the December 10th, 2018 meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
No.
Counselor Randall, is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Straw, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Next item up is a public hearing for the senior tax relief ordinance. If there is anybody wishing to speak at the public hearing, I will open that now. Please come forward and come to the podium, give us your name and address, and limit your comments to approximately three minutes.
Lois Morrow, 20 Ledgewood Lane, and I'm here just to thank the ordinance committee for working on this, and you for having the hearing, and I'm glad the town is really thinking about its senior citizens. I guess I am one. I've lived here 50 years, and I thought that the ordinance read very well, was very explicit, and I think they've done a very good job, and I want to thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Item number 31-2019 is the senior tax relief ordinance. Our tax assessor, Clint Swett, is here. I'm going to ask him to come to the podium and just remind us all about this initiative before we move forward.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I want to thank Matt and Maureen O'Meara, the town planner, and the ordinance committee for helping us craft this ordinance. It is a good ordinance, and I think it will help a lot of people. I'm not going to go over all of it, but I'll go over some of the highlights of it. Basically, if you're 65 years of age or older, lived in your home for 10 years or more, and are receiving the homestead exemption, and your federally adjusted gross income is $60,000 or less, you may be eligible for a refund on some of your property taxes, up to $500. So, it's a good program. And the one thing that I want to stress to people is, you know, tell your neighbors, tell your friends, tell your relatives. It's a program, and as long as, you know, there's money in the kitty, we can keep it going. The applications are, I put a small stack of applications on the back desk. You can grab those. I'll have them in the assessing office. I'll need to talk to our IT person about getting those forms on the website, so you can download them there as well. But, you know, if you can't get to the town hall, call the office. They'll be more than happy to throw some in an envelope and mail them out to you. But definitely take advantage of the program. I think it'll help a little bit. Anybody have any questions or...
Questions from councilors? Clint, thank you very much for your work on this. Appreciate it.
Great. Thanks.
Seeing no further questions, I'll be looking for a motion on this item. Counselor Caitlin Jordan.
Move to approve the ordinance as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Randall, any discussion?
Discussion.
Counselor Straw.
So, thank you so much for all your work on it. Thank you to the ordinance committee. I think it's a very well-drafted ordinance. I'll just keep it short and sweet. I think it's well-intended. I can't support it, though, while it has a requirement based on duration of residency. So, I'll just leave it at that. But yet, at the same time, I agree with the idea behind it.
Any other discussion? I'm really appreciative also of the work that the committee did, the ordinance committee, and, as I said, the work of the assessor. You know, as we've gone through budget discussions over the last several years, you know, there has been a lot of discussion around, you know, the widening sort of gap between folks that are on fixed incomes, who have lived in the town for a number of years, and seeing what we can do to reduce the burden that's placed on them. So, I'm happy that this is a first step to that. I think that, you know, as we see, you know, what the interest is in this and how it's embraced, and the number of people that take it up, comments like what Counselor Straw is talking about can certainly be revisited, and, you know, we can see whether or not it makes sense to remove some of those restrictions in future years. But I think this is a great first step, and I'm happy to support it. So, Counselor Randall?
Just to briefly reply, and I think Counselor Garvin touched on this, but when we were discussing the ordinance, the idea was to keep people in their homes, and that's sort of where that residency requirement came from, that when people have a home, we want them to be able to stay in that home.
Counselor Straw?
So, I would just say, imagine if it instead was a program for food stamps or a program for welfare benefits, and I'll just leave it at that.
Any other discussion? Mr. Chairman. Go ahead, Matt.
If I may, through the chair, there's also eligibility for renters in here as well that Mr. Swett did mention, but there, it does not only apply to homeowners, you can also be a renter. So, I just want folks to understand that if they qualify, that they should also look into the program as well.
Thank you for the clarification. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor of approving the ordinance as presented? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next item is number 32-2019, a citizen petition that was received by the town, petition for enactment of ordinance to limit disposition of shoreline access real estate. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this item? Please come forward to the podium. If we could have your name and address, please.
Collette Howe, 17 Hyview Road, Cape Elizabeth, representing the Cape Elizabeth Save Our Shoreline Access Coalition. I'm just here tonight to thank you all, and especially Dev Lane, and Matt, and your support team for your hard work. I mean, it started back in August, I won't give you detail, but it was, I call myself a soldier in an unknown land, but it's been a learning process for everybody, a lesson in civics, and charters, et cetera. And thank you for all your time and effort. We appreciate it. We look forward to the public hearing on the 23rd, and I just want to commend you for all your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public that wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none. As is outlined in the agenda, the town charter is very clear about the necessary steps that need to be taken when we are in receipt of citizen-initiated ordinance such as this. So, the recommended action here is to set a public hearing pursuant to the charter within 30 days of receipt of the petition. The recommended date for the public hearing that we have before us is next Wednesday, January 23rd, at 7:00 PM here in the town council chambers. Is there a motion to set that public hearing? Counselor Randall, is there a second? Counselor Deveraux, is there any discussion? Counselor Straw?
Okay, I'm going to keep this short and sweet. You're obviously at the public hearing, free to make whatever comments or opinions, whatever opinions you want to voice. One thing I would love to hear specifically is, I'd like to know, how would the phrase "indirect access" be interpreted? So, for example, one could say that from here I have indirect access to the ocean. So, I'd like to have someone talk to that for me. I'd like to have someone talk to the phrase "shoreland areas," as opposed to using the term "shoreland zone" or something like that, in touch to that as well. Then I'm also curious, I'd like to hear people comment on why it's an ordinance as opposed to a charter amendment. And then, finally, the fact that if there's an expense like over a million dollars, currently we have to send that to the voters. I'd be curious, why allow five town councilors? We're putting in a supermajority, which, as a general matter, I view as somewhat undemocratic, although I understand the idea here. Why not instead make it a charter amendment that says, anything like this must be passed by the voters, as opposed to leaving it for the town council? And to the extent that we agreed instead that a better approach might be a charter amendment requiring anything in the disposition of land within the shoreland zone be sent to the voters, would that be sufficient rather than this ordinance? That's it.
Thank you, Counselor Straw. Any other comment at this point?
I have a question.
Counselor Jordan.
Just to clarify the timeline, we're having the public hearing on this, but it's basically as to whether or not we're going to approve it or send it to a referendum, correct?
No. So, the public hearing, we'll hold the public here, if we vote on this now as presented, we'll have the public hearing on the 23rd, and then at our February meeting is when we would vote on taking the action.
Right, so I mean, like, the public hearing, I'm saying is, like, because of the way it was presented, it's not like we can drastically edit the language, correct? I mean, we can tweak it to make sure it doesn't break any rules or whatever, but, so I'm just saying, all the things that you're asking for, all the addressing and all of those clarifications, it doesn't change, we can't do anything about it, is what I'm, I'm just trying to make sure I understand the process. We're going to hear from people, and basically what we're going to take in is either we push it forward, or we push it to a referendum, correct?
Counselor Straw?
So, we can't alter the, like, we can't tweak any, we're stuck with this. Got it?
Matt?
If I may, through the chair, currently I've submitted the question to Mike Hill at Monty and Leah to review that, and he's had a couple of different, I would say, more clarifying edits, that he's working with Nick Bryant, who is the spokesman, or the, I guess you could say, the counsel for the SOS group would be the best way to phrase that. Just on a couple of small points of the question of five counselors versus saying 70% because in the future you could possibly have more council members, so instead of having five, five could be possibly, would not be a supermajority anymore. So, he's got some of those finer points that he's looking at getting clarified, but ultimately not making any substantive changes from what was brought forward. What we're looking at this evening on this part is, there's two steps that are laid out in the charter. The first is, once the question has been submitted to the council, that within 30 days, the council needs to schedule a public hearing. So, that's, so we have, or the town has until, let's say, February 2nd to hold that public hearing. So, that's why Date A, or the 23rd, is being brought forward this evening. After that, the town then has 30 days within which it can set, so that's why it would be on the February agenda. So, to meet the second 30-day window to set a date for a referendum, or if the council so chooses by charter to accept it, then you would have that opportunity as well. That could, you know, if the council chooses to accept the ordinance amendments as submitted. And there was discussion with Mr. Bryant as to why it was brought forward as an ordinance versus as a charter amendment. I'm sure, I have a feeling that Mr. Bryant will be there next week to explain the differences as to why certain steps were chosen versus others. You may find clarification on some of those at the public hearing.
Counselor Jordan?
There's a question, probably more for next month, but I want to ask, while I'm thinking of it. What about the timeline? Should we send it to a referendum? Is there a timeline requirement for when the referendum occurs?
You just need to set a date. So, it doesn't have to happen within the 30 days, but you need to set that, you need to set a date within that second 30-day window. So, presumably, the council could, if they chose to set a date, they could set it for the same time as the June school budget vote, if the council decides not to adopt it, you know, so there, you have, but you have to set that date within that.
Like, 10 years from now? Just joking.
I'm not going to go down that road.
I was just curious if there was a requirement in the charter. Okay, thank you.
Any other, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of setting a public hearing pursuant to Article 3, Section 3, I'm sorry, Article 8, Section 3 of the Cape Elizabeth Town Charter for Wednesday, January 23rd, 2019, at 7:00 PM. Opposed? It's unanimous? Thank you very much. Next item is number 33-2019, Fort Williams group use requests. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak on these, on this agenda item? Seeing none. We have before us a number of requested uses for Fort Williams and associated dates in the groups requesting. Matt, or I see Kathy Raft is here. Either of you wish to speak to this at all, or?
Sure, I'd be happy to, Mr. Chairman. These are two different dates that were requested towards the end of last year. They've been reviewed by the Fort Williams Park Committee. The first is for the National Troopers Coalition picnic. I think they were here roughly five years ago and had an event at the fort and asked to come back again. So, they brought their request forward to the park committee. They both said they recommend approving that request, and that would be on September 12th, from 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And as you can see in the agenda, there's two different fees that they'll be paying for that. The second would be for a walk to cure arthritis, which would be on Sunday, June 2nd, and that would be a 7:30 AM setup. Participants would arrive at 11:00, and that would be at the picnic shelter all day, and that would be, there's a fee for that as well at $700. So, these are the two items that we have for requests. The protocol is that it goes to the park committee first, they'll review it, make a recommendation, and then it comes to the council, and that's why we have it on the agenda this evening.
And my apologies, I'm staring right at the chairman of the park committee, and I should have asked if he had anything he wanted to add to this or not. Thank you very much. Sorry about that. Is there a motion to approve the requested group uses? So, move, just going over. Counselor Straw, is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Gabrielson, any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Item number 34-2019 is a review of the proposal to construct pedestrian and parking lot improvements within Fort Williams Park, and I will ask first if there's anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this item. Seeing none, I will next ask Chairman Kearney if you want to come forward and speak to this at all, or?
I'm involved here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm batting a thousand here tonight, Jim.
Bob Metcalf.
Yep. Yep, so Bob Metcalf is here, and I know he's going to present detail of the recommendation. I didn't know if you wanted to speak on behalf of the committee, so.
Would you like me to do an intro on this?
Sure. Go ahead, Matt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Mr. Metcalf gets set up, as you may recall, back last spring, the council had asked the park committee to come forward with recommendations regarding the management of commercial vehicle traffic, buses and trolleys at the fort, and one of the recommendations was to take, to take the buses out of the circle from downloading their clients at the circle, and to take that up, back up to the central lot, and to try to improve the safety at the circle and other, and quite frankly, traffic flow. But in order to do that safely and securely, it felt that there was a number of pedestrian improvements that needed to be put into place, as well, as well as an ongoing management idea of trying to find a better way to get traffic to flow through that section of the fort, as well as address our parking concerns going forward. So, what we have this evening is the fruits, is the beginning fruit of that labor. We reached out through the park committee to Michelin Associates, and Mr. Metcalf and John Mitchell have both been working on this project. They've met with the park committee, as well as myself, Kathy Raftis, Jim Kearney who's here this evening, Bob, and Bob Malia, Public Works Director, and Kerry Curtis who's here as well as the park coordinator, and reviewed this plan, and have come forward with this as an idea for a solution. The idea is to do the work this spring, so we can have it in place for this, for the coming tour season, if you will, or the coming season, so folks can have a safer experience at the fort. And I can pass this to Mr. Metcalf, who can explain more of the details this evening, and thanks for coming up, Bob.
Thank you, Matt. For the record, I'm Bob Metcalf of Michelin Associates, and hope with my voice will last. Caught a cold on Friday afternoon, and I've lost my voice three times today, so. Anyway, as Matt said, you know, we're looking at the improvements for the center parking area down by Portland Headlight, and the summary that I provided to Matt, this I know to you folks, is basically the existing term, the parking area with the buses right now really is very limited to handling about six buses, okay, with the increased number of buses that have occurred, with the increased number of cruise ships that come in, you know, wound up with buses actually parking into the parking lot where visitors are to expect it to be parked. So, what we've done is we've looked at the plan. Yeah, I'm trying to do some enlarges, I thought they might be a little bit easier to read than the eight and a half by 11 I sent over the back, because when I start to look at it, I says, I'm not sure I can see it. Essentially, what we're doing is the large turnaround area for the bus right that's existing out there right now, eliminating that and reconfiguring the existing parking area. We're pretty much within the same confines in terms of disturbances, a little additional disturbance that'll occur. And what we're able to do is accommodate for 12 buses that would be parked along the perimeter, and then we're able to get the parking fields, so that we can actually get some better delineation of the visitor parking, and we've increased the number of handicap spaces in that lot from two to eight spaces, an increase of two spaces. We're looking at changing the circulation for vehicles to help deal with conflicting traffic patterns between vehicles and pedestrians. We're going to be making this entrance only coming in on this end into the parking lot. Everybody will come in through buses, as well as visitors, and exit out in one way only. That will help to control some of the congestion, because right now that's a two-way entrance coming into that parking lot, so you've got buses and cars going in and out, so that'll help to control some of that access going through. Also, because the parking lot is gravel, it's, you really can't delineate the number of parking spaces, so it hasn't really been an efficient location for parking vehicles in there. So, we'd be looking at paving the parking lot. As part of that paving program, there'd be an eight-foot-wide sidewalk that would go along the perimeter of the bus drop-off. We're looking at eight feet, primarily because of the volume of people coming and going out of the, from the tour buses, and a lot of people with mobility issues, providing an adequate space for people to move along that travel course. And then along the head of the parking, closer to Humpsey's Road, we're putting a sidewalk in on that side to help direct people down in towards Portland Headlight. Within the parking area, we're also looking at relocating the existing portable toilets that are down closer to Headlight and bringing those up into this location here. Part of that is the constant during peak season, trying to clean those out and trying to get access with the population that's constantly coming through the park. This puts it not only in an area that's more accessible to be able to clean them, but it also puts it with the largest population. also puts it with the largest population in terms of tourists coming in would have access to them. So it accommodates two things. Gets it out of the way and makes it much more functional for service. In terms of accessibility down towards the park itself, we're looking at adding some additional split rail fence along the curb line. One of the experiences that's been occurring is people coming down the walkway, then cutting across and going across the driveway, and actually walking down, I forget the name, Captain Strut Circle. So this way, by putting that split rail fence, and it really pushes people to stay on the walkway, and then we control that space to a tighter crosswalk area where the railing was missing before, because we need to have vehicle access into the portables. This way, that can be closed off to help control some of the pedestrian circulation on location. One of the other issues that has occurred out here is with drainage. Right now, the way they gravel the parking lot is, everything just sheet flows across the parking lot. Some goes into the grassed areas. A lot of it goes out on Humphreys Road and then down to Captain Strut Road, and basically winds up going discharge overboard by the parking town by Portland Headlight. And one of the others is the stone-dust pathway. When we get a lot of rain events, that becomes rather impassable. It just ponds in that area. So we'll be looking at paving that section. And to address the drainage, we're looking doing a storm drain infrastructure system. We'll be adding a series of catch basins and piping that'll capture the water from the parking lot, putting some curb inlets along Humphreys Road to capture runoff coming down the curb line there, and then discharge it back down towards an existing brick banhole that would be replacing that ultimately discharges overboard right now. Be concentrating that. And then where the parking is by the headlight, we'll be recreating that area, putting a couple of structures in there to capture the water there, so that it's not just sheet flowing across and out over the shoreline. So all the stormwater will be concentrated into one location. And one of the things, the committee was very interested in is addressing some water quality, because right now, there is no water quality treatment for what's going across there. So we're looking at installing these filtration units that actually install within the catch basin structures themselves that can help remove some of the contaminants and sediment. So there'll be at least a first, first catch of treatment in those devices, so. In terms of landscaping, basically, that center island will be a little tighter than it is right now, but that, we'll be looking at trying to keep it as low maintenance. So it'll be grassed, and there'll be some ornamental trees that'll go along there that we've selected will tolerate the harsh environment that often come down. And that's where every time I go out there, it's always cold and windy, so. But anyway. In addition, to address the mobility issues, we're looking at installing an ADA handrail that'll go along this section of the walkway, which is a rather steep incline going down, as well as coming back from Headlight. So there'll be a handrail system that'll have a lower pipe rail for individuals in either wheelchairs or walkers or whatever, just to give some additional mobility. And then also, because of the distances people walk, we're looking at a series of bench locations throughout, leading from the parking lot down to Headlight, so folks that can, you know, with ambulatory issues can only go so far. We've given them respits, if you will, to be able to sit as they're working their way down and back to the park. So I think that's pretty much an overview of the proposed improvements on it. It's really intended to really address the circulation and more efficient use of parking spaces and the buses. If anybody has any questions, they're having here, sir.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Are there questions? Anyone? Counsel Deveraux?
You said basically 12 buses can park here?
Yes.
What happens when we have days with 70 buses? What, where do they go?
That part is, I know, to scheduling, you know, we've got Kathy and Kerry in terms of how they schedule the buses with the cruise lines, and I can't talk to the others, because you've got cruise lines and then you've got day visitors that come through, so.
So basically, if there is an overflow, there is going to be an area where the buses can park? Or will they be parking where our cars are going to be parking?
You really can't park them in that location. I know they have taken some and put them up with the playground areas up above, so I think it's coming down, they're trying to find a way to do better scheduling of the buses coming in, so. This way, as I said, you only have accommodations for six spaces right now, at best, and we're winding up at 12 in this location, so.
Okay.
Jim, do you want to speak there?
Yes, so I'm, 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 part of the problem.
Jim, do you mind, do you mind just coming up so everybody can hear you?
Another question, I was, is to schedule the buses. Jim Kearney, on Shore Road, I'm also a member of the Fort Williams Park Committee. So we have not chosen to go to a scheduling system yet, although going forward, we've asked the operators to try to limit the number of buses that they schedule into the park at any given time. When we get the most heaviest concentration of commercial buses is through the cruise lines, and the cruise line operators and their local partners are going to try to work so we don't get into that situation again. So it is a known problem, but with the new, with the old configuration, it was not ideal to push them into the parking lot. With the new configuration, it will be impossible to push them into the central parking lot. So if that happens, we'll have to come up with another scheme. But what we truly want to avoid having more than 12 buses at a time within the confines of Fort Williams Park.
Right, but it sounds like you may not be able to avoid it. I'm just concerned because we heard that parents were trying to park to watch their kids play soccer, and there was nowhere even for them to park, and that's across the road. And there were so many buses, and so I'm just worried that if we don't have enough bus parking, that it's going to impact residents even more. Have we looked at any other ways to increase bus parking?
Well, this, I mean, actually, we had four spots with overflow for two. This takes it from four to 12 for now, so that's a threefold increase. Whether or not that's enough, we don't know, but we physically don't have the space within the confines of central parking, as you can see, for any more buses. And the team at Michelin Associates has done a great job to reconfigure these lots to try to accommodate that number of buses. But at some point, we're going to have to, you know, close the gates to buses. It's, we are, we are at the point in 2018 where we had issues with overpopulation of passenger vehicles and overpopulation of buses. And there are a couple of things that we're trying to do to address that. One of them is this reconfiguration. We also have a new fee structure that we're proposing, the council's looking at. And so, and then getting in front of the local tour operators to help them, or to have them self-regulate the schedules are our three initiatives as we move into 2019. So the answer is no, but we're trying. No additional bus parking spots.
Matt, do you want to add something there?
Well, we can go up above, up by where Biden to Maine is. We can oftentimes put the additional buses up in there if we need to. That's what we've been doing now. And as Mr. Kearney says, you do have the ability to put in three times as many on this, and there's more order to it. So this, we're hoping that this is going to be a much more orderly improvement, I guess, to managing at least the flow as they come through. And it should be better for the operators as well. One other item that we have here is, if you notice at the, at the exit part, right now there's a pretty good drop, so buses can nose down, and the angle's not right for exiting there, so there's a pretty good cut that's taking place there to make that exit from that lot improved, so that could, can hopefully improve our, our flow as well. It's not, I mean, it's the best solution we can have at this point in time. We think it'll be a dramatic improvement over what we have as well. Quite frankly, to place order in that parking lot will be a huge advantage, just because right now, you know, it's a wide-open gravel lot. With the island improvements that are there, there's no real way to structure outside of how, how the day begins can set the tone for how the day ends, as far as how parking is organized there.
Thank you. What is our?
Counsel Deveraux?
I'm just curious what our timeline is on this. When would they begin construction?
Bob, if you'd like to.
What we're looking at peripherally, I guess, starting, we're looking to do it this spring, so we'd like to go out to bid fairly soon to have that and construct, and get the early part of the spring construction season, have them in place in time for the...
Now, Bob can answer the, kind of the timeline question. That's what we're looking at.
The timeframe, excuse me, the timeframe we're looking at is to put this out to bid the first week in February, so that we can get the bids out, turn around, select it, so that we can start with the spring construction and be finished before Memorial Day.
About that first.
Counsel Strong?
I think Valerie was...
Counsel Randall?
Mine is on a different topic, so if you're following.
Counsel Strong?
So how many spot, how many passenger vehicle spots are there now, and how many will be after the change?
I need to go ask me that now. It's less than 100 out there theoretically, but we wind up with 98 dedicated spaces, eight of which are the handicap spaces, four passenger vehicle spaces.
So only...
You've got to remember, we're taking part of that lot to move the buses around.
Oh, got it, got it, got it, got it. But we're still losing the one, one, two, three. It seems to me we're losing 25% of the parking spots, because we're losing the entire...
Far back.
Yeah. And to the extent we were looking at generating a significant amount of revenue from parking fees, we're in effect giving it up for buses.
We did gain parking spaces, but, excuse me, but moving parking down here, we're able to take a number of parking spaces and move it down to this location here.
Got it.
Okay. But I was, I forgot to check the number of what the existing spaces are out there, but we did reconfigure it. And we want to push it back on this edge to get the bus laying in here and maybe require a 24-foot travel lot.
Go ahead, Matt.
I have the answer to that question. We had roughly 88 spaces right now, and we're looking to go to 98 spaces for cars in this.
So we're increasing...
We're actually picking up 10 spaces in this, in this lot by, by, by breaking it down and placing order into it, whereas now, because, because it's so fluid, quite frankly. And then if you do put buses in there without having them organized and where, how they need to be set up, by actually shaping it and getting the spaces to the width and the dimensions that they need to be, and reconfiguring some of the islands, we actually have picked up 10 spaces in there.
I got like three more. Do you want to go? Go ahead, Counsel.
This may be a question more for Jim, but I know when we were talking about increasing the bus fees, one of the points that came up is that passengers might be looking then for a better bathroom situation. And since the portable toilets under this plan are going to be moved, I was just wondering if you had talked at all about doing something like composting toilets, something that's more permanent and can be a little bit nicer, but doesn't require the plumbing of a full bathroom?
Yes, we have not addressed that. We have our budget meeting coming up this week, and we know that restroom facilities are going to be a big topic, but that was not part, this is primarily a safety-focused issue, and that's next on kind of the expectations list. So no, not yet.
Counsel Strong?
So there's that question for, has the Fort Williams Park Commission reviewed this proposal yet? It's for you.
Yeah, we have reviewed this proposal. We made a couple of very slight modifications, and the team here did a great job.
So, and did the park commission then eventually like conclude that you guys support this proposal? I'm just...
Yes, we did.
Ah, great, okay.
Please support this.
Counsel Gabrielson?
I just had a couple of clarifying questions, too. So first of all, I wanted to clarify what the action that we're looking for at council tonight is, where we would be approving this proposed design so it can go up for RFP.
Correct.
Is there a cost estimate associated with this design?
Go ahead, Matt.
If I may, to the chairman, thank you, sir. Yes, we're looking at roughly an estimated $400,000, I think $12,000 to $420,000, with an alt, there's an alt add that might be in there, so probably looking at $425,000 to do the whole project. We do have the funding. We have two different funds that currently exist, so what I would be looking for from the council's authorization to use funds from the Fort Williams Park Fund, as well as the Lighthouse Fund as well, because they're both in, in support of trying to, you know, from the Lighthouse side of it, we're looking at basically almost like a 50/50 split between the two funds, which we have enough reserves in both to more than adequately fund if they, if they share it. And quite frankly, either one could carry the cost, but we feel that it's legitimate to use part of the Lighthouse funds to, to help fund this project.
And Matt, can you just Reader's Digest version remind everybody the difference between where those two funds are derived and so on?
The Fort Williams Park Funds come from revenues that are generated at the park through officers' row rentals, the donation boxes, events that take place when you rent, say, the picnic shelter and other items that have, you know, other items that generate revenue for the town. So that, that's the primary nexus of those monies that come in. And then the Lighthouse Funds are proceeds that come from sales at the, at the Lighthouse gift shop. But those monies are specifically earmarked for, for items that can be spent in support of the Lighthouse. And as this is directly above the Lighthouse, it's felt that that's a perfectly legitimate use of the funds, because the majority of the folks who are parking right there are walking the, you know, hopefully walking in a much safer capacity now, or visiting in a much safer capacity to get down to the White House, which is their desired goal.
Counsel Randall?
I think Counsel Strong. But I was just going to ask what the balance of those funds are.
You could go first, go ahead.
I think we're probably going in the same direction. I was going to ask what the balance of those funds are.
I haven't had, I anticipated that question, Counsel Randall. Let's see. On the Fort Williams Park Fund, we're looking at currently a balance of $793,746. And on the Portland Headlight Fund, we're looking at a balance of $2,247,894. So there's adequate funding in both to, to get us where we need to be.
Counsel Strong?
So this is for Jim again. If I recall, the Fort Williams master plan, which admittedly is from 2011, so very, very outdated, and we've talked many times about it needing to be updated, so this deviates somewhat from it. But the key aspect I wanted to know if you guys discussed at all is, the area where the proposed porta-potties are going was designated as location for potential future visitors' center. Was there any discussion on whether we'll still be able to fit that in with this reconfiguration of the parking lot?
Yeah, and that, that issue has come up again as we got ready for this discussion. So we need to look at what the best configuration for the visitors' center is. Does it make sense to move the visitors' center up the hill for the summer of 2019 from where it currently is? And so we're weighing that. This piece of work and that piece of work couldn't wait for the new master plan. We had to get these safety improvements in place.
So I don't mean the booth? I mean, like, a brand-new, like...
Full-scale visitors.
Yes, yes, yeah. Was there any, I think the master plan, I could have it this wrong, has it, you're kind of walled off as the potential future location being about where the porta-potties are going to be placed.
Right. And so if we need to move, remove, get rid of, substitute down for visitors' center, that's all possible, because this is just a temporary porta-potty.
But otherwise, with the drainage changes and everything else, I guess this might be from Michelin Associates?
Yeah, that's work down, no, from there.
So we're not, we're not effectively put, going all in with our chips, and we've precluded that path in the future.
None of this work compromises any potential for the visitors' center. For a visitors' center, not for this.
I have a question for Jim. I see almost a dozen new bench locations included in this plan, and my recollection is that we have consistent and standing interest in people looking to do memorials and dedications and things like that. Would this afford us the opportunity to grant those, grant those options for folks, or?
Yes, we have to work with the town manager and with Bob Malley's office to make sure that we could do that, but that's a high probability that we'd be able to use these new bench installations and the backlog of requests that we have to address that, which would be great.
Yep.
That was similar to my question. Is there a way that we could even create it as a fundraiser with artists or people designing the benches to where it's a fundraiser, or is it something to where the benches are built into this plan and they'll be provided for? Is that something we could deviate?
We, if I may, we have kind of a standard bench profile that we've been using throughout the whole park that's been consistent. So I think that's been the model that they've gone through going forward, and there have been, yeah, there's been a high level of interest in folks who want to make a donation to have, you know, in honor of or in memory of a loved one. So there is, there's been that interest, but generally, we've had the same type of configuration, so they couldn't be different throughout the park. If that's something that the council felt that they'd want to change that direction, then it may be something that the park committee could take a look at, but at this point, it's been pretty much the same, any color you like, as long as it's white.
Yeah. I'm just thinking, there's a potential there for, to create something really interesting and to have it as a fundraiser for this, which, if we can raise money for it that way, we wouldn't have to use our, our funds.
Matt, on the point about the gift shop revenues, is there any, was there any consideration given to funding it fully through that?
consideration given to funding it fully through that? Or does that not sort of pass the straight face test here?
We looked at it from both, both directions, felt that it would be, felt like that was like the most equal-handed, just in case eventually you end up maybe wanting to do a larger project such as visitor's center or something along those lines. That was the heavier number. Just felt it was important to have buy-in from both, both attributes. Just felt that was the best funding formula at this time.
I guess my question, though, is that the, the gift shop revenues seem to be growing at a faster pace than those from other sources, and so if we were to draw down that more, even if it was a two-thirds or three-quarters split, that, you know, on our current trajectory, those revenues are likely to be replenished more quickly than, than either the existing revenue streams for the Fort Williams Fund or any potential new revenue streams that we're considering. So, you know, my particular point is that when we go over the financial dashboards every month, and we continue to see the gift shop sales exceeding forecast, that, well, we should do something with that money if that's what it's there for, and our, our ability to spend it is limited based on the parameters set up with the fund, but if this is something that falls within it, then from my perspective, it's something that we should use the money for, so.
Perfectly, if, if you wanted to make that, if the council wanted to push the ball in that direction, we could be, we could go that way, too.
Well, that's certainly my opinion, but I'd be interested to hear anybody else's. Counsel Randall?
I agree with you 100%.
Anybody else?
I agree, too.
Okay. So I don't think we need to decision that right now. I don't, I don't think that's part of our expected action.
If you want to authorize me to go forward with putting this out to RFP, and then we can come back with a.
I think let's see what the number is, and then when we vote to approve the, the expenditure, then we can specify what, from what accounts. So, so all that being said, are there any other questions?
Just three left, last ones. I apologize, it's just because it's such a huge proposal, and we're just, this, we're effectively workshopping it right here from my perspective. Number one, have we reached out to the tour bus operators at all to get their input? It reminds me of our very well-intended attempt to provide a second pickleball court where we planned it all out, and then the pickleball people said, "You did it wrong, we, we don't want this." So have we heard from the tour bus people how they feel about this?
We got initial, we got initial input from the tour bus operators this summer when we were in the commercial bus workshop, which is what led to this design. So they contributed information on the flow of buses, how they should move through the cycle, so yes.
And second, obviously, it's just their opinion, they don't have any veto power or anything. Have we reached out to the Fort Williams Foundation and the Arboretum Group with respect to the plantings, and is that something that can still be changed? I know we have a huge plan with respect to plantings in the park and what's proposed are non-native species, and I thought as a general matter, we had some inclination towards native species, so.
The foundation was present during this review, but we have, we have not talked about what the actual plantings would be, or got any input.
But we could, we could change that as we go forward. And then last, and it's actually my biggest overall concern here, I imagine it's come August, these passenger vehicle parking spots are filled with cars, with people taking their kids to play soccer on the soccer field, and we've got these buses zooming through the parking lot, and basically the kids are streaming between all the buses to get up to the soccer field. How do we deal with that? And what happens when a kid gets hit by a bus? Am I, is it, is it, we've talked so much about safety, is it unreasonable for me to be concerned about that with this configuration?
It's not unreasonable for you to be concerned about that. We did not address the specific issue of what happens if a child were to get hit by a bus.
Not to phrase it that way.
We have discussed that situation as we do stat up here, what would be the southwest corner. Two things. Number one, a lot of the parents of children playing on those fields up top will tend to park in officer row parking, which is beyond here and out of reach of the buses, so that, that's number one, big help. Number two, we also ended up in the last B draft of this addressing your very specific question, which is allowing more room at this back southwest corner and extending the eight-foot parking lot there specifically during, so it would be there specifically during times when buses, parents, cars, and players would all get there at the parking at the same time.
And if you look on the plan in this whole corner here, existing is only one small area for people to unload and go up to the fields. We've taken this whole corner, which shows up as a hatch park. That's all going to be stripped out as a safety zone, so the buses can't encroach into that. The size of these buses, they're not going to be whipping through this parking lot.
And I said three, so I'm going to count this as three prime. So previously, we looked at paving that upper officer row parking lot, and, which is why this for $450, I'm, I'd like to see that number, but I thought we had a number of like 300 for the upper parking lot, like the dog walker parking area, not to call it that, but are we going to see that as the next proposal to pave that, to provide more parking for people using the multipurpose field?
So my expectation is that will be a major point of discussion during the next.
Got it.
overhaul of the Fort Williams Master Plan, but we have not addressed that as, as a specific lineup yet. I tend to think that as we get more and more traffic, which seems to be the theme here, we're going to have to look at the configuration of that lot and some of the existing parameters around playgrounds sitting right in the middle of it and things like that, but nothing formal has happened at the committee, wrote at that parking lot yet.
Thank you. Counsel Gabelson?
I just have two questions. I think the first one's for you, Jim. One thing I don't see on the plans here is pads for pay and display areas.
We were just whispering about that as you guys were discussing, but that's not something that's been approved yet. Adding pads if needed for pay and display is something that we would want to talk to.
Book coordinate with the vendor to get an idea of how many and where they need to be located.
And, and you're comfortable that this design will be able to safely accommodate whatever configuration of pay and display would be consistent?
Much more so than before. I think the addition of this one way and some of the design concepts that Kerry brought in to, you know, add safety also creates the pedestrian flow, which makes that concept even more attractive or more viable, I should say.
And one last question for me. Is there any permitting required for any aspects of this plan?
We are in, if I may, Mr. Chairman. We are in good shape. We do not need permits for this at this point in time. It's consistent with the original master plan that was approved, and we've actually spoken with the code officer, because what we have now is currently what they call impervious surface, so we're just trading one impervious surface for another when we go from, from gravel to asphalt, so.
Do you need to make a subtle correction? I met with DEB, and they told us it was just a maintenance, so then he sent me back an email, there's a PBR we have to fill out, so it's a 14-day permit process just for the changes to the storm or outfall, but it's not a major review of anything, so.
Thanks, Bob.
Any other questions? Thank you for the thorough information. Seeing none, all those in favor? Moving forward with this plan as presented specifically for the purpose of going out to RFP. Is there a motion?
I would move that the council authorize the town manager to move forward with an RFP process consistent with this plan.
Moved by Counsel Gabelson, is there a second?
Second.
Counsel Randall, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Post? Motion passes. Thank you again. Next item on the agenda is number 35-2019, Statement of Policy, Boards and Committees' Review of Policy Barring the Appointment of Town Employees from Serving on Standing Boards and Committees. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak to this item? Seeing none, I'm going to turn it over to Counsel Strah. He was the one that requested this item on the agenda.
So during the last round of appointments to the appointment committees, we had an applicant who was a town employee of the school board, I believe, and as part of the application process, he was informed the current standing policy is that municipal, town or municipal or school, I'm not sure of the exact delineation, employees, there's a policy bar generally preventing appointment. I think he disagreed with the policy and requested that. My understanding is he wanted us to re-review it. I understand the benefit of having a bright line policy, but I think our current policy actually isn't a bright line policy. We have a number of exceptions, and I think if, what I would like to see done is to send this to workshop where we can talk about making those exceptions more broad-based and nuanced so that, because it's hard for me to understand why we would tell the people that work for the largest employer in the town, which is the school department, that's, let's say, a kindergarten teacher, why can a kindergarten teacher not serve on the Riverside Cemetery Committee? Where's the conflict? So I'd like a more nuanced approach, and I'd like to send it to workshop if people are open to it.
Thank you, Counsel Strah. So I'm hearing your desire to send it to workshop. The other thing obviously we could do is send it to the appointments committee to discuss.
That would work.
Did you have any preference or opinion between the two? Is there other discussion from the council on this? Or preference between either of those actions? Counsel Gabelson?
I, I think I feel more comfortable sending it to workshop for discussing by the whole council rather than sending it straight to appointments. I'm happy.
Counsel Jordan?
I think if we're going to send it to appointments, we need to send it with a lot of direction that we would need to have a discussion at workshop in order to do that. So I would say if you send it to appointments, it's just going to come back and go to workshop, we might as well go to workshop.
Any other discussion? I'll then be looking for a motion to refer this to an upcoming town council workshop.
So moved.
Counsel Strah, second.
Second.
Counsel Deveraux, any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. Next up is item number 36-2019, Update on the Reuse of the Spurwink School. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none. Matt, you want to introduce us, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to. I'd like to recognize Jim Rowe from the Historical Society is here this evening as well. Jim and I have had the opportunity to get together and meet a few different times now to try to move this question forward. We've also had the opportunity to meet with Joe Shalat, who's a local architect, to come, we went through the building, did a full examination of, mostly from top to bottom of the interior, and have noticed that there's a number of improvements that need to take place. However, the one thing we don't have is the authorization for funding. Mr. Shalat has come back with a proposal to begin the process, which would be to come back with, with plans and specifications, and then to come forward, that we would use that to, to then determine what our next steps would be as far as the, the cost of what it would be to, to renovate the building. Right now, you know, such things as insulation would need to be done, interior drywall, windows, interior finishes, things along those lines, but he could come up with a plan after meeting with the Historical Society and myself, and try to find out, you know, what would be the best needs, so he would ask all the questions, quite frankly, that he needs to ask in order to find out what the improvements that would need to take place within the building. So what I'm looking for is, well, basically, I want to let you know, I'm going to bring this up next month with a funding request after Mr. Shalat comes forward with an idea for a cost to get the project started, I guess. Ultimately, I think we're looking at roughly about a $500,000 bill to totally renovate the building. That's an estimated number, but I'd like to get a better, better, better feel for that from what we may end up wanting to do. But I wanted to let the council know that's where we were at at this present time, but if, but he's going to come back to me, so I'll have it on, ready for discussion in February to, to try to get some funds in order to then go to the next step and have that ready and tee it up for possible construction season. Or if, as, as well as have a sharper number, so then Jim and I can have, or the town and the Historical Society can have discussion as to how we end up getting from, from where we are now to, to fully through the project. Additionally to that, we're also going to need to have additional paving installed over by the, over by the Spurwink School building, and so we may end up.
Is that included in the ballpark number you just threw out or not? Don't know.
Yeah, my answer, I guess, I can't say that I could speak to that accurately this time, but I, but I would like to have our, our towns engineer, Steve Harding, take a look at that as well to see how we could go forward with that. That would also need to go to the planning board for site plan review to have that approved as it is, you know, because the construction of new, a new parking area within the town center would require us to get to that point, as well as you'd have to go through, I think, site plan review possibly, actually, I don't think so, site plan review regarding the building we're okay with. It's more for the.
Parking.
It's more for the parking, and then, of course, you'd have to do building permits and all along, all along those lines, but, but I just want to let the council know where we're at at this point in time and that, you know, we're trying to get this moving forward so we can get the project up and, up and running at some point in the near future, or by government definition, in the near future.
So under, so the proposal that Joe would be coming back with is a preliminary cost estimate for work that needs to be done. Is there opportunity to align any work, would it be approved to move forward with other facilities repair going on, potential facilities repair going on in town?
Depending upon the cost, Mr. Chairman, yes, that's a good question. What, you know, if I'm, if I'm reading the direction you're going in, if, say, for instance, the school has been looking at doing some improvements regarding safety and security improvements at Poncove and at the, and at the middle school. If those two projects could go at the same time, and if something like that was to go to bond, that would be a good opportunity. You'd want to try to combine those two together, similar to what happened when the library bond came forward, and there were school projects that were also wrapped into that. So anytime you may be looking at going into a bonding situation, that would be a good opportunity to combine those two. So that's, that's definitely in the thought process as well, depending upon what the overall number, number would be, but considering that it's all in the contiguous campus, there may be areas that we could do at the same time, or somebody who may want to bid on a similar project, or there is, even from funding, that if we consolidated them together at the same time, it could be more cost-effective for the.
Right. Any other questions or comments for Matt on this?
If I had one other.
Go ahead.
Question that was raised this morning at the, at our personal advisory committee was, one of the staff members had asked if, if the town would still own the Spurwink Schoolhouse, and the answer to that is yes. You know, it's still a town asset, and that's why I think Mr. Rowe and I have had these conversations about it, you know, and the reason why you look at doing more of an extensive or comprehensive renovation to the building is it is a town asset ultimately, and when it is sitting right next to the library, which we have a substantial investment into, if you were going to do it, you'd want to do it appropriately, and you'd want to do it the right way instead of having to do something this year and then five years from now another project, you know, and then stretch it out like that, so you'd want to tackle it all at once, because many of the improvements in there, quite frankly, are at the point that they do need to be refreshed in many different ways. And there are a couple, there are smaller elements within the building that Mr. Rowe and I have talked about, the lift versus having an elevator in there, but that's more what you would call tenant improvement. And then we've had also the discussion as far as trying to, you know, advance the ball, discussing how the relationship between the town and the Historical Society would be, I guess you could say memorialized through a, through a leasing arrangement, long-term leasing arrangement between the town and the, and the Historical Society.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you very much. We'll look for that on the next month's agenda. Next item is number 37-2019, Fund Transfer for Legal Services. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this item? Your name and address, and three minutes, please.
I'm Jim Mora, 5 Wambek Road. I support adding funding for surfside litigation costs. The principles discussed in the settlement proposal, public comments on September 10th have not changed. Stay the course, stick with the principles, continue funding surfside litigation costs.
Thank you very much. Any other members of the public wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none. Matt, can you tell us a little bit more detail about your request here?
I would be happy to, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As, as Counsel Strah mentioned earlier this evening, we're at roughly 102% of our legal expenditures for the year. One of the, one of the challenges we run into in that is that you cannot overexpend within, within a budget area by, by our, by our rules. We are at that point right now, and we haven't over expended the whole line in that because we have both legal services and audit services within that budget line. However, both are going to be, you know, we'll, we'll definitely spend what we have budgeted for audited expense, and legal expenses, we're. spend what we have budgeted for our audited expense. And legal expenses, we're basically at 102% for this year. What I'm looking to have is, is looking for the council to authorize a transfer from unassigned fund balance in the amount of, I think we could get through, hopefully through to July 1 with an additional $80,000 from a transfer from unassigned fund balance to there. Right now, we have, once I process the current, current amounts that I have, we'll, we will blow by our current budgeted amount. But I think 80 would get us through to the end of the year, at least to the beginning of the next fiscal year. Primarily, those expenses are tied to the Paper Street litigation. We do have other, other lawsuits as well that are ongoing. They're not as heavily labor-intensive, but they still do add on a monthly, on a monthly basis. And they would be our normal expenses, I guess, or our anticipated expenses. So this, this is fairly expensive, but I do agree with Mr. Mora with what he has said. I mean, we are in for a pound at this point in time. But we do need to, we do need to be in concert with our requirements of the charter, that we need to fund that appropriately. So that's, that's my best estimate at this point, if we could have an aside.
Can you clarify, is the request for $60,000 or $80,000?
Did I say, did I say $60,000?
You said 80 in your comments, but it's $60,000 here in the agenda.
I'm sorry. Yeah, it should be 80.
80.
Yeah. Stumbled some on my part side with that.
So the requested authorization is in the amount of $80,000. Is there a motion from counselors? Counsel Randall?
I move that the council approve the recommendation of the manager to transfer funds from unassigned surplus to 0135-2010 Legal Services in the amount of $80,000 to pay for legal costs through the fiscal year ending June 30, 2019.
Thank you very much. Is there a second to that motion?
One second.
Counsel Deveraux, is there any discussion?
Just, if we could, just so we have it before us before, what's the size of the undesignated fund roughly at this point? Is it over a million?
No, no.
I thought that was going to be a softball question. I'm sorry.
Well, just got updated amounts. Oh, yeah, we're, we're, we can handle the $80,000, that's for sure. Can I give you an updated number next month on that?
We're going to get an updated amount at Wednesday's workshop.
Yeah, I can give to you where-
Over $200,000?
No, I think we're closer to, closer to $1 million.
Oh, okay. But we're, we have over $200,000 in it. So we're using less than half of it. Okay. All right. Okay.
Other discussion or comments?
Actually, if I can have just a moment.
Yeah, take your time.
I have an amount right here.
Oh, there's-
Yeah, I knew it was much more than that, but I wasn't sure. Yeah, that's why I said we're in good shape. Yeah, about 3.8. But we also have unassigned fund balance from the most recently concluded audit as well that would go above and beyond that. So-
Great.
Yeah, we, the 80,000 will be-
We're fine.
Won't, won't put us in barrels.
Any other comments? All those in favor of the motion on the floor?
Thank you.
Is there anybody that wishes to speak to anything that was not covered on tonight's agenda? Seeing nothing. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So?
Counsel Jordan, is there a second?
Second.
Counsel Randall, all in favor? We're adjourned. Thank you very much.